October at Brainerd City Hall. Roll call.
Gauram, Grisula.
Here.
Duval.
Here.
Peterson. Powell. Erickson.
Here.
Norwood.
Here.
And Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation under God, indivisible, and of liberty and justice.
All right, on to item four. Looking for a motion for the agenda.
Move to approve, Grisula. Second, Duval.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And then approval of minutes from September 17th.
Motion to approve, Duval.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And oppose, same sign. And on to public forum. I'll open tonight's public forum at 6:04 for the Planning Commission. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the commission. And seeing nobody out in the audience. Anybody online? And I'll close the public forum at 6:04 and 40 seconds now. And on to new business, 7A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a discussion of the comprehensive plan update. City Council approved $28,000 to update the comprehensive plan in 2025. Staff proposed to review the entire comprehensive plan at a high level to ensure consistency with our zoning code that was updated shortly after. Staff proposed the primary objective of the comprehensive plan update should be to increase the threshold at which a mandatory EAW is required. Our current comprehensive plan and city policies are well positioned to meet these requirements. In order to do this, city must file with the EQB Chair and adopt a comprehensive plan with the following elements. Note, these elements are required for the seven-county metropolitan area. Number one, a land use plan designating existing and proposed location, intensity and extent of land, of use of land and water for residential, industrial, agriculture, and other public and private purposes. A transportation plan describing, designating, scheduling, the location, extent, function, capacity of existing and proposed local, public, and private transportation facilities and services. A sewage collection system policy plan describing, designating, and scheduling the areas to be served by the public system. The existing and planned capacities of the public system and the standards and conditions under which the installation of private sewage system, treatment systems will be permitted. Number four, a capital improvement plan for public facilities. Number five, an implementation plan describing public programs, fiscal devices, and other actions to be undertaken to the implementation of the comprehensive plan, and a description of official controls addressing the matters of zoning, subdivision, private sewage systems, and a schedule for the implementation of those controls. To note, the EQB Chair may specify the form to be used for making a certification under this term. Staff does look at this one as kind of one of the big ones. I know we had a discussion approximately half a year ago on implementing the comprehensive plan and where we're at. So I see this as kind of one of our main undertakings and certainly would help towards getting that exemption from the EQB Chair. So with that, staff is looking for direction to create an RFP for review by the commission. This would most likely be at the next meeting, depending on the number of agenda items on the next Planning Commission meeting. And with that, I can open it up to the Planning Commission.
All right, any questions of staff? Any?
I do have a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The 28,000 that was allocated for this, this purpose, is that able to be rolled forward into calendar year 2026? That's still exist?
It does. It is able to be rolled forward.
Perfect.
And then I have a question. So the heavy lifting of the Planning Commission is more of that item one and the land use portion of it? Are those other items also under the purview of Planning Commission?
I do believe so. Certainly, if we would hire a consultant to do this, we'd want them to check on some of those other items. Certainly, our city engineer, public works, public utilities departments would have to be involved in this. I know we do have capital plans for public facilities. Certainly, a consultant would help out if it meets the requirements to, you know, increase that threshold. So there'd be certainly some interdepartmental work on that. I do think number five would be also some, some heavy lifting from the Planning Commission, which would be the implementation of the comprehensive plan. So that's something that would be very important for Planning Commission review as well.
Any other questions of staff? Otherwise, looking for a motion or a direction? For staff to proceed? Oh, go ahead.
Before we go to motion, in here, is there an opportunity to take the implementation schedule here in chapter eight? And, and kind of give us a snapshot of where we're at? What kind of progress we've made since 2020, what, 20?
Nineteen?
Twenty nineteen and 2021 in that neighborhood? And we, we set ourselves goals? And I can go through here and I can sort of see, yep, yep, here's once we've done, you know, update city ordinances to reflect changes in plan, complete a future land use map that reflects the, I mean, we did all that stuff right out of the gate. But, you know, there are other, other city entities, EDA, for example, that might, might be the lead on the supporting infill development and how, you know? So I can't see where all of the work and progress has been here. And is, is that something that can be done within the context of this, this contract as well?
See, I do think that is the, you know, kind of the major focus of item five there is taking a look at chapter eight, taking a look at what we've already done. What do we need to do? Is there any other action items that need to be added? And then getting chapter eight kind of compliant with what the EQB Chair would be looking for.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any further discussion? Otherwise, looking for a motion?
Move to direct staff to proceed as, as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And oppose, same sign. And motion carries. And then item seven B was withdrawn. And so moving on to item eight A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a review of the shoreline ordinance. Staff would like the Planning Commission tonight to discuss any items in depth regarding the proposed shoreline overlay district. Did want to mention Commissioner Duval did a great job reviewing the shoreline ordinance over the weekend and pointing out some clerical errors to staff. An amended, an amended ordinance was sent out to Planning Commission members on Monday that included the following revisions. Again, fixing some of those clerical errors, changing all references to shore impact zone to the abbreviated SIZ. Switching the general development and natural environmental uses in the uses table. Adding additional lot size and withstanders for riparian versus non-riparian lots according to the standards in the model ordinance from the DNR. Adding conditions to the rules and administration of conditional use permits per state statute for shoreline areas. There's additional three criteria that's, that's required. Also removing platting requirements in the shoreline district as this is not needed as our subdivision ordinance covers all requirements in the DNR sample ordinance. And then finally, moving the shoreline PUD requirements to the rules and administration section of the zoning code and cross referencing those sections correctly. So staff included that in appendix B of the ordinance. I know that Commissioner Duval had a few other substantive items that need full commission discussion. So this would be a time to bring up any discussion items or direction by any Planning Commission members, and I'll open the floor.
All right. Any questions of staff before?
Yeah.
Okay.
One question. James, your introduction, it says the current shoreline was last updated in 2003. Cities are required to meet minimum standards. I assume, given that we are out of compliance, we're not meeting those minimum standards currently?
Yeah, there are some minimum standards, things that haven't been updated, obviously, in the last 22 years. I've been working with our local hydrologist on those. We've had a couple of meetings. He's also preliminarily reviewed and commented and directed staff to make some changes. So those have already been included in there. So we're very close to, to meeting those standards. And then obviously, we'll have discussion tonight to see if there's any further direction from the, the Planning Commission. And then, once we've, I guess, established all of the Planning Commission's direction on that, I'd be going back to the DNR hydrologist to kind of work on, on the finalities of the shoreline overlay district.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Duval, did you have?
If I, if I may, I don't want to monopolize the discussion, but there are a couple of places here, very much touching on Commissioner Erickson's question about sort of these minimum standards that the state requires. And we have a built environment, right? I mean, a long time built environment. So if you think about the standards in, in that table, 22, two dot two, we've added a category, James added a category called non-riparian, which will not conform to the DNR's minimum standards. But I, I think it would be worthwhile having, having James negotiate those points with the DNR so that we, we have basically 10,000 to 20,000 square foot lots. If you take the shoreline zone for Rice Lake and you lay it down there at Lum Park, it extends to the alley between 12th and 11th. And we got a, we got a bunch of stuff already in place. And it's not going to ever get scrubbed away and turned into large spacious lots. So it's what we live with. And the consequence of, of this would, would be then to create a bunch of non-conformities, which we just tried to resolve in the ordinance review process, rewrite and such, to try and address all of ours. And now this would set us back into a bunch of non-conforming properties. So I, I would, I would recommend that we direct staff to work with the DNR on these minimum lot sizes, on the non-riparian stuff. The stuff on the lake that first touches, that first set of lots along the lakeshore. If you scan around our city, most all of them meet. So there's no harm done. That really meets an important obligation or port criterion that the, the state has in their ordinance and in their authority. So can we negotiate our non, our built environment so that we don't end up with a bunch of non-compliant properties? So that would be this item, what is it? Item C in that table, riparian and non-riparian lot sizes. So we're really talking about the non-riparian lot sizes there. That's the, that's the principal one, where we've already got sewer infrastructure in place. Does that make sense to empower, empower our director to kind of engage and see if, if DNR, I mean, there's no, there's no point in, in being hard, fast on the rules if all you're doing is, you're not, you're not changing the outcome because it's built and it's going to be like that.
Chair? Yes.
Yes, to answer your question, that was, that was helpful because that's the area that I immediately thought of too, that I'm looking at it on the map here, just that far northeast part where, you know, it looks like that'd be impacted the most. Obviously, there's other areas too, but yeah, I think to give staff some direction to, like you said, negotiate that, to kind of minimize some of those impacts, especially on the ones that are, well, I guess it's non-riparian, but it's the ones off of the water technically.
Mr. Chair? Yes.
I would agree with that. I would also, in, in addition to that, the lot frontage, a lot of what's there currently is TN1 or CN1, which has a minimum lot frontage of 50 feet. So adjusting that lot frontage as well would be something that I would look at if we can.
Staff, do you need a motion for either of those?
Does seem like there's a general consensus, so I'm fine with just that general consensus.
Okay. Any other items that was sticking out to any commissioner?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may. Table 15, two dash 22.3. The uses that, and how those are regulated within the lake and river classifications. As, as Director Gronvik had indicated, there were some just transcription errors. He's, he's captured those in, in the, in the revisions to that table. There's a couple that I wanted to talk about and see what our feelings were on those. Let's see. One was the, the public semi-public for the forested rivers. So this is essentially the Mississippi River is under, and these are the DNR standards. Am I correct, James?
These are taken from the sample ordinance, the DNR standards for forested rivers. Again, I looked up the definition of forested river. We're probably somewhere between a forested river and an urban river. As Commissioner Duval mentioned, forested rivers, their sample ordinance indicates that public semi-public would be conditional. If we're considered an urban river, you know, certainly that'd be potentially downtown Minneapolis, something like that, it'd be a permitted use in there. So again, we're probably somewhere in between those definitions of, of a forested river and an urban river.
So the implications of that being a, a conditional use, sort of the public semi-public uses that would hit there would be St. Joseph's Hospital, Riverside Elementary, Brainerd High School, and the, and the Lincoln Center, Central Lakes College, BPU's Water Plant. You know, you start going down, when you look, even though it's a narrow 300 foot quarter, you're picking, you're picking up and tagging those. And, and would we be better off? Again, we are a built environment in large part to just allow those to be permitted uses and, and again, empower staff to, to negotiate there with the example of what you call it the urban river. You know, so being able to homogenize sort of the forested and where the forested meets our kind of our city type of a landscape. It's not, it's not jibing. And can we do that without creating a bunch of non-conformities by complying with state code?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would voice my agreement with that as well. And I was jotting down basically the list that you had just ran through, Commissioner Duval. I would maybe add even our own fire department would likely be
Yes, indeed.
Within that as well. And if you may have said, but the high school as well is, is right there. And then, I guess particularly probably this question then, if I could, for, for staff, I guess, what would the impact on, as this is written, be on the BIC right there and our, and the dam that we have as well? Would the dam be impacted as well as BIC?
So most, yeah, most items are going to occur, because it's such a large site, you know, most items are going to occur out of the shoreline district. But, you know, for instance, if any of those public semi-public uses were to do any work in that shoreline area, they've already, you know, have existing facilities, but they want to expand in it. And it's within that shoreline area, certainly would be a conditional use permit at that point. BIC is, is zoned industrial. So, you know, not really related to the public semi-public. I think that the recommendation and discussions with the DNR is for the industrial, we certainly should go along with what the DNR recommendations are. I wouldn't consider all of the BIC site, you know, to be in with that, within that area. But certainly, if work were to be conducted within that shoreline district, there'd be that extra requirement there.
Thank you. Is Buffalo Creek then going to be considered a tributary stream?
Buffalo Creek is considered a tributary.
Okay. And again, do you believe that you have enough consensus from the commission as far as for?
Yeah, it seems like the consensus would like to negotiate that part with, with public semi-public as well.
I think we're all in agreement.
Mr. Chair, may I introduce another?
Another would be more than welcome.
May I have another, please? Extractive uses. This would probably be like sand, sand gravel aggregate kinds of uses. And Director Gronvik's proposing a interim use permit for, for all of those, which I think the, the tool makes sense. The location, I, I think about the rivers again. That's a, that's a 300-foot wide zone from the, the high watermark of that river landward. And, and I wonder whether an, an extractive use is appropriate within a 300-foot, because those are going to be fairly large operations and may quite frankly occupy a lot of that 300 feet. And, and, and could we, for the river and tributary, the forested rivers and tributary streams, simply just disallow extractive uses in, in that particular district? I would favor excluding sand pits and aggregate from that 300-foot zone buffer around rivers and streams.
Yes.
President, is that, is there an example of where that is allowed in our current?
It's, it's generally allowed, the extractive uses are allowed in the RL1 district. So that's rural living. So, you know, those places are sort of like the, the lively auto, the South Brainerd area there, the airport, up around the, west of the airport is another area where that would be around. These would be, and Beaver Dam as well. Beaver Dam Road, Wise Road around that area. None of those, none of those directly contact the rivers and streams. Those are more within the, the lake standards, which would be under an allowable use, under an interim use permit for the natural environment, recreational development, and general development. So this would focus in on places. I think historically, there was, there was a, an extractive use there, like south of the, the water treatment plant along the trail there in Buffalo.
So off of Hattie Street, Hattie and Jenny, they're, historically speaking, that's roughly 40 years since it has been used as that. But it was a gravel pit or a sand pit.
Right. It's not an RL1.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Would that be essentially more restrictive than what the, the ordinance is proposing currently?
It would be more. Is that, James, is that?
Yes, it would be more restrictive. My understanding is we could potentially be more restrictive. Certainly, I have to run this by the DNR to see if there's any state statutes that require, you know, some type of usage along, along the river. And we have the opportunity to make it a conditional use or permitted. But to my understanding, we could potentially make it more restrictive. So, and this one, I'd probably like to see a motion on it, because we'd actually be making it not permitted for forested rivers and tributaries. But I, I believe we most likely could. It's something that I would have to still obviously talk to the DNR about.
Thank you. I guess my thought is, you know, maybe this as it is with the consensus items we've had is maybe a good start. And I don't know that I would support that piece of it. Maybe at a later date, but. Because we could, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we move forward with this, is that a piece that we could add at a later time?
So we could either make a motion to direct staff to put it as a not permitted currently, or there could be a direction to get some further clarification from the DNR.
I would be more comfortable with the latter.
And that's also where I was, before making it a non, not permitted, I would like to better understand the implications and how much of an impact it would be making. I, I'm generally like the idea. I just want to make sure that before we put the stamp down that it's, that I fully understand the implication. Yes.
And I'll add to that. Certainly, because the buffer zone from rivers is 300 versus a lake is, is 1,000, it wouldn't have as big of an impact if you were to also have not permit it in the, I guess, your, your shoreline district for lakes. That'd be a, you know, a much larger reach on something like that. So I just wanted to note that is 300 feet. Interim use permits, obviously, would be, you know, reviewing, you know, visibility and, you know, site impacts to the river, which may nullify a project like that anyways. I'm not sure what that would look like. Certainly, stormwater runoff would be reviewed as part of an interim use permit, and things could still be denied based on some of those criteria that we'd have to review from the interim use permit. But do want to note that, you know, it's, it's not as big of an impact with rivers because it's only 300 feet versus the 1,000 feet for lakes.
And, you know, when I roughshod over and look on Google Maps very briefly as to the recommendation, it, I see that it is a very narrow band that we would be impacting. But before, I would, I would like to better understand. Anyone wanting to entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to negotiate with the DNR to implement the standard for extractive use of interim use permit across all the water body types.
Looking for a second and/or, well, need a second. And a third time, second time for, looking for a second, and a third time looking for a second. And?
Mr. Chair, before you close that?
Yep.
So the, the motion is to accept staff recommendation as presented in table 15 to 22 dash, dot three. It does not include the prohibition in the forested river and tributary streams.
Okay.
And to clarify that motion, would you like me to find additional information from the DNR to see if we can become more restrictive?
My recommendation would to, would be to, to, to implement the interim use. You know, as you're presenting this to the DNR for review, they may or may not accept that recommendation. And, and then we have, we have a sense of where we go from there. But my recommendation is that we, we use the interim, interim use permit as the vehicle for allowing and regulating that use. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I guess I'll second for discussion.
Okay. And second by Erickson, discussion?
I apologize. I'm a little confused by the motion because I, you know, in our discussion, I think we were saying we didn't necessarily need a motion. We had consensus and staff was going to move forward with the, the two items that we had consensus on. And then the third item had to do with the prohibition of extractive uses, which would have required a, a motion. Requires is not the right word, but. And then, so your motion does not include that prohibition, but more just seeking information on the prohibition or becoming more restrictive and using the interim use for extractive uses? Can you clarify?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Erickson, my, my recommendation is to accept what staff has proposed here for extractive use was, they're proposing an interim use. The, the use is allowed under an interim use permit across the board here, which is more restrictive than the DNR standard. So this would be needing to negotiate that with, with DNR. Because the standard that we're proposing, if this motion passes, would be more restrictive than their standard. would be more restrictive than their standard. Is that correct, James, or did I have that wrong?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's correct. So the sample ordinance doesn't include interim uses. Right now, our extractive use or gravel pits or anything like that in our code is an interim use permit. A lot of municipalities are going towards interim use permits. So that probably should be a discussion with the DNR to make sure that we can do that. You're just going with staff's recommendation on that. And I'll have, I can certainly have a discussion with the DNR, making them aware that we'd like to make it an interim use. Really, you have to meet all the conditions of a conditional use permit for an interim use permit. The difference with the interim use permit is you can remove that use if city council so wishes and the planning commission makes that recommendation. That use has to cease to operate in those areas. So that's a lot of times why they do it. You can also put a timeline on how long a gravel pit could potentially operate as well. So that's the difference between the interim and conditional use permit.
So, Mr. Chair, if, if the convention that we had discussion on, on the previous item about making something more restrictive than the state code, you know, in, in the course of following up on that, this kind of falls in that same discussion piece. And, and, and I believe what we're doing is we're putting together our, our package that we recommend be implemented and approved, approved by the DNR, who has the, the, the authority to approve or deny that. And so I'm suggesting we build the package and with empowering staff to be able to negotiate along the way to build this so that they get a, a product that reflects our, our city's perspective and then turns that, hopefully as an approval back to us to then implement and, and put into our binder as, as the code that we're going to continue to do, reviewed shoreline development or development within this shoreline zone.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So then by way of further discussion, I guess I'm, you know, if, what staff's recommending is, if there's some items that may be more restrictive or if there are items that are more restrictive, and in the motion is to, you know, basically seek clarification with the DNR if that's essentially permitted. I think that's implicit in, in the process. I guess I'm not entirely sure we need a, a motion for it, but I think I'm going to vote no at this point.
Any further discussion? At this time, I'll support the motion under the understanding that this is more to clarify with DNR and to make sure that when we, when the full packet comes back, the full ordinance comes back from DNR, that the utilization of that interim is matching with our ordinance closer and using a, it is more restrictive, but it is closer to what our ordinance currently is. And thus being more uniform. Any other discussion? All right. To vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, same sign?
No.
And motion carries. Any other items that we were?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I?
You may.
The last one I have is mining metallic minerals and peat in the shoreline. And I think, I think that that should just simply be a no. I'm surprised it's a permitted use across the board, to be quite honest with you, in the, in the DNR model ordinance. But understanding also that this is designed for a statewide application of urbanized and rural areas. It seems to make sense that, that they're trying to define that balance. But we don't, we don't have that. And I, I just don't feel that mineral mining is, is a reasonable use within the city. And again, this, it defers down if, if we use this thing, are using this as an overlay district. It, you put this over the base zoning and in all of our zoning districts except the RL1, we don't allow mining. And so the RL1, this really zeroes in on that. And again, that comes to the, to the lively property, properties to the west of the airport and, and the Beaver Dam Wise Road and my, in my scanning the, the, the city maps or the, the GIS maps and such. And so this is saying that, that no metallic mineral or peat mining is allowed in, in those places. That would be my recommendation.
For the sake of my understanding, can you help me understand what peat mining is specifically?
Peat mining is the removal of, of old bog material, the moss material that is very rich and organic material and is used quite a bit for amendments in potting soil. It's used for, sometimes now for insulation in, in building construction and such like that. So that would be almost like going into not truly a wetland, but in those peat areas where the soil is, is fairly rich and rather deep than that, that moss.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess from my position, I agree, you know, with treading carefully with, with things like that. But a strict prohibition is too far for, I guess, my, my liking. I guess just not knowing, you know, we got a lot of, a lot of land that goes north and, you know, really directly north of the city. And, and as you mentioned, west of the airport and things like that. But I guess I'd be uncomfortable with a, you know, a strict prohibition on, on those. And I, I hesitate to go beyond what the, the DNR standards are. Again, we're currently not meeting the minimums. So I think it's a step in the right direction to, what we're doing here is addressing that and meeting the minimums. And I think that's a good first step.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just looking at our allowed table of uses, mining and extraction are one item in our table of uses. I would say we do interim use permits across the board to match our current zoning. Again, just matching what we have, what we've already discussed and determined is appropriate for our city. And that's, that is a question that I had for the commission and for staff is that as far as when we are looking at where mining and extraction can happen, it is fairly limited side, inside the city limits, correct?
It would be only in that RL1 district. And then we'd have to, whatever the more restrictive uses between the shoreline district or the RL1, you'd have to refer to that.
Okay.
So, so because it's in the shoreline district, if it were permitted, wouldn't potentially have to notify the DNR because it's permitted in the shoreline district. But it would still require an interim use through the city. So if it were permitted in the shoreline district, they would not be notified, but the city would have to go through the interim use process.
As Commissioner Griswold stated, I would be in line with that as for the sake of uniformity. Willing to entertain a motion or further discussion? Mr. Chair, I move to change mining of metallic minerals and peat to interim use across the board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
And motion carries. I will say for just a brief comment, that this is, in my opinion, some of the heaviest lifting that a planning commission does and has done during my tenure. And so, anything else that is of note that anyone wants to? Otherwise?
Do you have a, just
Okay.
Technical clarification on the, the introductory page two of your memo. The reference to Appendix A is simply an appendix to the, the, the ordinance going before city council and not a new appendix in the ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
So we say Appendix A, it's Appendix A to the, to the ordinance amending sections, da, 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 da. And, and so it's just part of that document before city council.
That's correct. So I did make a, a kind of a minor change to the actual ordinance itself to kind of specify that it's an appendix to the ordinance, it's not an appendix to the zoning code. So it just kind of further clarifies that.
Thank you. I'd just like, like to comment, Mr. Chair, if I may, that I think staff's done an excellent job of kind of taking a lot of complex stuff, the heavy lifting and, and trying to merge two different, you know, ordinance documents and, and that don't, when you look at them, they're clearly not sort of the same style. So trying to have to crosswalk one to the other, bring them together in a way that minimizes the number, the amount of redundancy and everything. And I think staff did an outstanding job of that and I want to commend them for that. So thank you, James, for that.
I am in much agreement on that comment. It's from other positions and jobs that I've had where two ordinance or laws or governing bodies that both are playing into a situation and neither one of them talk to each other. And they both make a rule that is going to dramatically impact you. And you're sitting there going, Bob said this and Joe said this, how am I supposed to make this work? And so thank you for making it work. It's, it was not easy. Otherwise, do you need a motion as far as any other item or the, the whole of what we've discussed tonight for this item with the changes that we've? Do you need anything more as far as a motion?
So I believe I've gotten direction on, on a couple of items with consensus as well as a motion for the other items. I'll just make a note, you know, some of these will be, as we discussed, negotiating with the DNR with that. So I think the, I, the schedule for this may end up changing a bit. I'm, I'm thinking we're probably not at that level for a public hearing at the next meeting. What I do is again, have that discussion with the DNR, bring it back one more time for the planning commission to look at, and then kind of get that final write-off from the DNR once we have that completed ordinance. So the schedule may change a little bit based on those discussions with the DNR.
It is looking like it is going to be moving into the new year for this one. Okay. All right. And then on to item 8B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is the planning commission itinerary update. So staff listed upcoming itinerary items for commission to review and also added sign lighting to the itinerary. We are currently working on the shoreline management regulations and beginning the comprehensive plan update. So certainly both of those are, are pretty large undertaking, so those will take some time. But with that, I'll open the floor to the commission for discussion.
Anyone wanting to make comment or question of staff? Mine is only a comment. And it's, the, it's been a lot of work very quick. And so I think that we are, we're working through a number of things and there's some really heavy things coming up in the next few months. But I do not, I don't have any changes to the itinerary. Yes?
Yeah, no changes on my end. And similar to your comments, the list of completed ordinance is very robust. 10, 10 there. And then the first two on the, in progress. After going out at tonight's meeting, you can put in, in progress by number three, comprehensive plan as well. So it's a good list. And we're made a lot of progress and looking forward to these other ones on the list as well. I think the, I, I know of a few, the number seven lighting regulations for outdoor signage. I know there's one in my neighborhood that I feel for my neighbors. They've got some bright lights at all hours of the night blasting their house. So it'd be good to look at some of those.
And as far as item five and six, again, some fairly weighted discussion items coming up. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't, I don't see reason to, to shuffle the deck here. We may in the future, but we got a couple of big bites coming, a couple more big bites coming up here that seem to be the priority at the moment. And so when we have the luxury of being able to put those in progress or completed, you know, I think the next discussion will be interesting about how we look at, you know, five through eight or what new challenge comes before us that we may want to make the next top priority.
Okay. Yes?
And I'll just note from the last one, I did move up solar arrays on there. We are getting definitely some interested parties in potential solar fields, Brain Republic Utilities has mentioned it on some properties. So I did move that one up because that one, you know, certainly kind of at the forefront right now with, with staff being approached with that. Obviously, if somebody does come forward with some type of application before that, we would address it at that time, but that's kind of the reason why I did move that one up there.
All right. Otherwise, moving on to item nine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I do have one update for the planning commission here. This is regarding the keepers development project. So the city council did approve the preliminary plat as well as the PUD development stage plan at the last city council meeting. In addition to that, council also approved distribution of the EAW, which can be found on the city's webpage, on the community development page of the city's webpage. And then also to note, the city did receive good news regarding the sewer study performed by SEH that indicates the existing sewer in Crestview will be able to handle the proposed development. That's all I have.
All right. Yes?
May I question staff?
Yeah.
James, the, the EAW and, and some of those other studies. So as, as this project matures and, and moves forward, that's part of the, that's part of the bundle that we're going to be going through? Is that fair to say? Or help me think about what the homework's going to look like on this project?
So I will be adding the sewer study to it with what we received from SEH. I'll also be providing a link to the EAW. Certainly, the planning commission will want to review that document. It is quite lengthy. The actual document itself is probably 30 to 40 pages. And then with the, all the appendices and, and maps and some of the details on there, I think you're between 350 and 400 pages, you know, within that realm. So that will be included as a link for the planning commission. You know, certainly items can be brought up on there if there's any concerns that were, you know, brought from the EAW that kind of pertain to any of the land use regulations or anything the planning commission has. There were traffic calculations that were put into the EAW as well. It didn't require, you'll, you'll see in the EAW, a full traffic study, kind of per MINDOT requirements. So something to note, but it did calculate how many cars per day they're expected, what they think will happen with that intersection of 371 and Greenwood there. So something, I know that was a kind of a question from the planning commission at the last meeting. So there are numbers and calculations. are numbers and calculations in there, but, but there won't be a full traffic study required as part of the EAW.
So what we, we heard a number of comments during the public hearing process on that, with specific concerns like the traffic and, and such, and, and we acknowledged, as a commission, we acknowledged those and said that those will be issues that will float up in this following step, and so we'll be wanting, I think, whether through the staff report, or through our own analysis of these documents, if we can kind of make sure that, you know, the points that were raised, the concerns that were raised, that we deferred to these studies, that we're able to kind of report that back out would be outstanding.
Any other comments? Otherwise, moving on to item 10, commission and member reports, I'll start down on my right, and Commissioner Duval.
I've done enough talking, thank you.
I always welcome, and then on to Commissioner Griswold.
I missed the last meeting, so I'd just like to welcome back Commissioner Duval.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Erickson?
Nothing further, thank you.
All right, and I have nothing further, and on to item 11.
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, and all those in favor?
Aye.